Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Maryville Town Council for today, Tuesday, September 26th at 6:30. Please stand for our invocation, followed by a moment of silence.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, again we come before you, first of all, to say thank you for your protection that's been offered in this community through our, through those who have pledged to serve. Thank you, Father. Thank you also for your goodness to us as a community, for the other protections and the way you've blessed us. Father, now again, we seek your guidance for wisdom and knowledge that the men and women who make the decisions for the planning and the growth of this community, God, that you would bless them with those things. For your blessings upon our families and upon our children, we thank you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Mr. Hardaway, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk Treasure, please call the roll.
Certainly. Councilwoman Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Uzalak.
Here.
Councilwoman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman White.
Yeah.
And Councilwoman Bella.
Here.
All seven in favor, and I'm sorry, all seven present.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. We are very honored tonight to have a swearing-in of a new police officer, Troy Glenn Allen. Please approach to front, in front of the table there, Chief Nusis, Police Commissioners, and Clerk Treasure.
How you doing?
Good.
There you go, that's good, Kelly.
Right. All right. Please repeat after me, raise your right hand. I, Troy Glenn Allen.
I, Troy Glenn Allen.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
impartially.
Impartially.
And honestly discharge my duties.
Honestly discharge my duties.
As a police officer of the Maryville Police Department.
As a police officer of the Maryville Police Department.
Town of Maryville, Indiana.
Town of Maryville, Indiana.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my skill and ability.
Best of my skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Kelly, can you get that?
Chief, do you want to say something?
Yeah.
I just wanted to welcome Troy aboard. He comes to us with about a little over 14 years of region law experience. He's also an instructor. We figured we'd bring somebody on and that can help train some of our new guys in learning a lot of the stuff that is a necessity in this job. And when he came available, it would have been, it would have been a bad idea to pass him up, so welcome aboard and thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next on the agenda, we have the Employees of the Month for the Town Court's offices and the Clerk Treasure's office. I'll call Mr. Griffin to the podium, as well as the representatives from those two offices to join you.
Madam Clerk Treasure, if you'd like us, please, if you could just take a hiatus from the morning.
Absolutely.
Microphone, let's use the microphone, Michael, please.
Can I be heard?
Let's use the microphone on the table.
I thought I could be well heard without it. But I will do this because we're recording it. Hi.
Hi.
It is definitely appropriate recognition. As some of you may know, I am new to the role of serving the town council here as they serve you people of Maryville. Part of doing that job for them is to recognize the people who directly deliver the services of the municipality that they select, for which they budget and appropriate and equip to help them deliver services to you directly in the ways in which we have to do it as employees and appointed officers of the town. So let me begin with growing another arm, because I could really use one. Judge Velasco? And the staff you have here, would you like to read the certificate to recognize this member of your staff, Veronica Garcia?
Good evening, everyone. Certificate of Recognition, Employee of the Month, September 2023. This certificate is proudly presented to Veronica Garcia for your initiative to go above and beyond expectations of duty for the town, for the town court. Your ability to initiate a task from concept to full operational status has shown us that you are a leader and invaluable to our department. Awarded this 26th day of September 2023. Signed, Michael Griffith, interim town manager, and Kathleen D. Pettit, HR Director.
Ms. Garcia, on behalf of the town council, and myself, and all of the staff and leadership here in Maryville, thank you very much for your example and for your good work, and we celebrate it, but we hope we get more from you, too. Congratulations. Your Honor, thank you. Madam Clerk Treasure, this is a member of your staff. I've been calling her by her last name all the whole time, and I did not know that she is Aurelia Santos. Ms. Santos, Madam Clerk, if you would read it for the honor.
Now that Shonda has made us look bad. Okay. So this goes to our own bookkeeper, Aurelia Santos, and I just want to say that she really does go over and above the call of duty. She never says no, even when she needs to say no. She works on vacation, she works when she's off, and if we're ever in a pinch, she's always there to make sure that we get whatever we need. So this certificate of recognition says Employee of the Month, September 2023. This certificate is proudly presented to Aurelia Santos for your initiative to go above and beyond expectations of duties for the Clerk Treasure's office. You are extremely hardworking, a team player, and always willing to help others and help in needed, as needed, outside of your, your job duties. Awarded this 26th day of September 2023 by Michael Griffith, interim town manager, and Kathleen Pettit, HR Director. Thank you so much.
Ms. Santos, on behalf of all the members of the, of the Maryville Town Council and myself, oh, hello. On behalf of the Town Council President, the members of the Maryville Town Council, and of course, Madam Clerk Treasure, thank you for your example, Ms. Santos, and for the good work that that represents, and we celebrate it now, but of course, I, as the interim town manager, will always invite you, we hope you'll do more, please. Thank you again, and congratulations. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the Accounts Payable Register Voucher Approval for September 26th, as well as the approval of the Town Council Meeting Minutes of September 12th.
Still moved.
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mrs. Uzalak, for approval of the consent agenda. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the Standing and Special Committee Reports, Budget and Finance, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Later on in the, on the agenda, under ordinance is, we will be having ordinance 23-24, with our budget, first reading budget hearing. I make a motion at this time that we add ordinance 23-24 to the agenda.
Second.
You have a motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Minchuck, to add to our agenda for tonight, first reading ordinance 23-24. Any questions or comments on the motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
What is that ordinance?
It's this one here, Leonard.
The one she can't.
Oh, okay, the budget, I'm sorry. Okay, got it.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway.
Yep.
Mr. Minchuck.
Yes.
Mrs. Uzalak.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Aye.
And Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Thank you, the ordinance will be added later in the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Hardaway.
That concludes my report.
Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Street Department, Mr. Minchuck.
Excuse me, no report at this time.
Mr. President, to Jeff through your committee.
Sure.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. President, that, and I've talked to Steve about this, Joe, so I think, Costa, this is the way we, we go about this. Like to have a three-way stop sign installed at 93rd and Vigo, which is the entrance to the Sandpiper subdivision. And I kind of go into public safety, Costa, I cannot thank you enough, I got four, five, six calls from people on Randolph, 93rd Avenue with the, I don't know what you'd call, what did you call the traffic stops? And the speeders on Randolph and 93rd, but I'd like to have that stop sign installed at 93rd and Vigo, this is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, with a second by Mr. Hardaway, to install a stop sign at 93rd and Vigo. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Svetinoff, will you make sure that gets added to our town ordinance list of stop sign locations?
Correct.
Thank you. Elections, Public Relations, and Town Beautification, Mrs. Neal.
Thank you, President, Bella. We have a few things coming up. We have our trunk-or-treat program that we're going to do at the Barbara Dean Center, October 26th, from 5:30 to 7:30. That information is going to come out in a newsletter as well, it's also be posted on the town, it's already posted on the town website. And then we are planning now for our tree lighting and family night at the Barbara Dean Center, December 1st, from 5:30 to 7:30, and we're looking to really get the community involved in this activity. We have already reached out to the school system to get all five of the elementary schools to have a tree decorating contest to, that way to hopefully get more people to come out and to the tree lighting. And more information will be posted on the town site for that also. And that concludes everything.
Thank you. Environmental Affairs, Mr. White.
Yes, Mr. President, I wanted to say specifically about the COVID situation, I think people are saying it's rising a lot. I did get some things from the CDC that said that Lake County is still low. No deaths at this time. Looking at the wastewater treatment plants, those are, in Lake County, those are showing those upward trends. But as far as items, not item, but as far as Indiana Department of Health is concerned and CDC concerned, we're, we're at the low levels right now. Still, they want people to take the vaccine if they can. Do you have anything you want to add, Marge?
Well, they're suggesting you take the flu vaccine along with the COVID vaccine, and it's supposed to be good for the body, from what I hear. I got the flu shot already.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
No report.
Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Only thing I got is, I know since the last meeting, our PD's been very busy, and we just received an email from the chief talking about the great work these officers are doing. Please forward us those commendations, if, if you have any, and we'll make them present here at the council meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. President, again, through Jeff's committee, Chief, again, thank you very much for the speed traps out, out in the Panhandle, 93rd, Randolph, and that area. Also, we all received, I think, the email from Chief Nusis, commend the SWAT team for last night. You stayed in contact with me, I appreciate that. We had the incident in the 6600 block of Pennsylvania that could have gone bad, and they worked their butts off to remedy that, so kudos to your guys and you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pettit, Economic Development.
No report.
Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Uzalak.
Yes, the parks are in good shape. I've driven around and checked them. 73rd Avenue Independent Street Park is looking very well, too. And one other point I have to make is Whitcomb Street is having a lot of speeders, so maybe we could get that traffic sign put back up there. So I've had calls, Chief, on different people and on Hendrick Street, too, so I'm waiting for the speed bumps, maybe, or do you think they'll be coming in soon?
I don't know when the speed bumps are going to be coming in, but we do have those areas scheduled to have another traffic blitz here soon, so you'll see officers out there writing tickets.
Okay, thank you.
Steve would have the speed bump delivery schedule.
Oh, okay, he's not here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Uzalak. Abandoned and Blighted Properties, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's been a little uptick in vacant and abandoned buildings. I continue to get calls here lately. I've been forwarding the information right on to the chief, and they've been responding, so we just have to stay on top of it, because for some reason, it's starting to ramp up again, and we just want to make sure that we address all those issues.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Dean and Barbara White, Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Meeting Thursday night, Mr. President, up in, I'm not sure which room, Mike did, I don't know if you know that, if Torrance or Barb told you, one of the meeting rooms in the Mike Anderson Event Center, 4:30, and I told Leonard and Jeff, we'll be putting together an agenda. We've got the guys from Core Construction coming. Trista's going to be there on some operational and budget items, and some recommendations coming up, so that'll be 4:30 Thursday night.
Mr. Pettit, when you meet, could you please inquire, I know that I received an email about yoga that was stopped, somebody was inquiring, wondering why that happened. Don't need to know now, but just could you get back to us, please? Or through committee? Thanks. Special Projects, Food and Beverage Tax Diversity, Fourth of July. Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple things. First thing is, is that for, for years now, we've been anticipating the Boys and Girls Club coming to Maryville, and I'm pleased to announce that on October the 4th at 10:00 a.m., Mr. Pettit and Mr. Svetinoff will be signing the necessary paperwork, turning over the title to the Boys and Girls Club, so that they can break ground and build a building.
Great.
That, that is going to happen. Secondly, Dr. Lackey met one-on-one with all department heads the week of September the 4th. Applications to serve on the Diversity, Equality, and Inclusion Committee was sent out to all department heads on September 12th. All departments were instructed to nominate at least one employee from their department to the committee. The applications were due September the 22nd, and this coming Friday, the committee will make a decision as to who's going to be on the committee.
Great, thank you.
That concludes my report.
Mr. President, back to Mr. Hardaway and the Boys and Girls Club. Keep in mind, RDC members, we committed $200,000 a year for 10 years to the Boys and Girls Club as a matching program for them to build, actually build the building out of the Broadway Tiff District.
Right.
And we'll have to get that, we'll have to get those paperwork going, Joe. You and I and Pittman and Swentz, once we close on the property, we'll get that lease signed with them, or grant agreement, I don't know how you want to do it.
I think it's, I think it's a lease and a grant agreement, so we'll talk in town.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to Department and Commission Reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, our representative is Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a meeting last Thursday, September 21st. It was kind of a back-to-back meeting because we hadn't had a quorum for the previous meetings. Some of the things we talked about, including we had a long-term treasurer that resigned, Mr. John Patalas, he said he's been there 29 years and it's time to wrap it up for him, so his last day will be December 31st, yes, December 31st, and he also had recommended that we get this, something type of system from Boyce that actually does all the things he's been doing for years and stuff, even though we've been paying him $19,000 a year. The system costs $15,000 a one-time fee, and then you have an amount, a monitoring fee for $3,000, which still turns out to be a good deal. Additionally, we approved $20,000 for leaf grind, and I did have a problem with that, and I abstained from doing that vote, and the reason I had a problem with that, because I don't think that you should crunch leaves up to get them composted. I think you should biologically, what I was taught, you should biologically have them composted, but one of the things I know, that I'm thinking that Solid Waste District probably should have known for some time, that you just can't have a whole bunch of carbon, you also need some nitrogen. So, so now they want to supplement that with crunching leaves for $20,000, I, I thought that was too much money. I thought I should have just bought some nutrients, some supplements for it. Also, we, we hired a young lady to be an environmental educator. Hopefully, we can get her around in the communities to start doing education on recycling. The two ladies that resigned, she's one of the replacements, they're still looking for one more person, and I think they have some, some interviews that they're doing now. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hardaway is our representative to the Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President. I sent an email to Kevin and Steve after a meeting Thursday, they're going to have a electric vehicle workshop, I think it's October the 5th, if I'm not mistaken, and I asked one of them to attend, and I'll have to follow up with them tomorrow, because neither one of them responded yet, but I think that it's important that somebody from here go and attend, that is from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m. in Portage. So that's, that's what's coming down the pipe, they're looking at, you know, charging stations throughout, everywhere. And, you know, people were complaining that between here and, I think, Fair Oaks, there may be only one or two charging stations or something like that. So they're going to start ramping up, building those.
That's our future, isn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you. Stormwater Management Resources, Matt Lake.
Yeah, real quick, I submitted all appropriate materials and documentation to the National Arbor Day Foundation. That's for a recertification for Tree City USA status. We'll just wait to hear back from them regarding that. I did reach out to Lake County Surveyor Bill Emerson with regards to Kaiser Ditch. He had mentioned that he wanted to see some maintenance down there. I mentioned that to him, he had nothing scheduled at the moment, but they're going to look into it for you and see what they can do, because it is a regulated drain.
Oh, what area is that meant, that they want to do the Kaiser Ditch? What street?
Well, it's actually, it would be east, or west of Taney Street, actually.
Okay.
So, because Taney Ditch is right there.
Yes.
So that's.
Well, he's done it before, too, so.
Yeah.
He's familiar with it.
Yes, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I'm actually probably see him Thursday as well, so I'll mention it again as well. NIPS goes out with Taney Ditch relocating the gas lines, they'll be done pretty quickly on that, for 79th Place and 78th Avenue. Also, met with Christopher Burke today, getting together the documentation for the Hickory Ridge Lake Apartment Regional Basin Project. I hear there's a new owner for the apartment complex, I'd like to meet with them, familiarize them with our project and how it's going to, you know, make their property better and the area better, so that we can coordinate on that. 97th and Grand, I received authorization from the Corps of Engineers regarding all of our permitting we submitted, so next step on that is going to be to acquire the property or easements to relocate that ditch further away from the road, so it's a matter of safety with regards to that area. And then, real quick, Turkey Creek, Clemmons Tree Service, and they're doing the risk tree removal, so they'll continue, weather slowed them down a little bit with the rain, but they're plugging away out there and we're getting a lot of positive feedback.
Matt, were you going to supply some trees for us, for the 86th Avenue New Median off of Broadway?
I did talk to Steve about that. The median is wide enough to plant trees there, so I got 112 trees that NIPSco owes us for mitigation, that I called them out on for some other projects that were, trees were lost in the right of way out the Panhandle, which were really just kind of scrubby trees, but we're getting full credit for those trees, so certainly, I'm working with Steve on that. So we want to beautify that corridor.
Right.
I didn't know if, if you wanted to look at, you know, any raised beds or anything, or just leave it kind of the way it is.
Just the way it is for this one, yeah.
Okay.
And I trust your judgment on it, so I'll just work with Steve and.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
There's no CVA report tonight. Fire Territory Board, Mrs. Neal and Mr. Minchuck.
There's nothing scheduled at this time.
Okay. Department Reports, Police Department, Chief Nusis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any of the stats for, at this time, for the previous month, they'll be coming out next time, but one of the things that I wanted to touch on was I've received quite a few phone calls over the last week or so, and everybody has seen, as Councilman Pettit was talking about, we've had some calls that drew quite a bit of attention, and there was a lot of people that were concerned why they weren't notified, why we didn't do anything else to let them know what was going on, they felt like they should be in need to know, and to an extent, I do feel for them, I understand why their feelings are like that, but one of the things that I wanted to be clear on, and this is something that I plan on communicating via some type of media, social media, I don't know how I'm going to do it, but I plan on putting something else out. What I wanted to mention is that a lot of these calls that we respond, especially these high-profile ones, where you see a SWAT team, or where you see a lot of officers, there's a lot of assessing that goes on, there's a lot of calls being made, a lot of action plans being put together. If at any time we would feel that neighbors, or nearby neighbors, would be in any type of danger, we would immediately evacuate. We don't like to tell what's going on because of several reasons. Number one, we don't want to create any unnecessary panic or chaos, because that's what will happen. That will put people in danger. The other thing that we don't want to do is we don't want to attract the attention of cameras and news to where they can start broadcasting and possibly give up our positions, and they can give up a lot of information that we have the upper hand on, because people don't know where exactly where we're at and when we're dealing with those type of situations. It's, it's, it's very calculated, everything that we do, so I just want everybody to, and I hate to say, I don't hate to use the words "trust me," because that's one of the words that people don't like to hear, but trust us in the police department, as we know what is best and we know what to do to keep the community safe, and we know how to handle these types of situations. Once we do have everything under control, we will release information like we have been doing. That's what I just wanted to make mention of that. The other thing, this goes to Councilman Hardaway, you mentioned about the ordinances, I've been driving around, I like to drive around in the morning to see the area, and I have noticed that there are some things that need to be addressed, and one of the initiatives that we've been taking on now is if we see an issue with a residence that's got some type of ordinance violation, you know, grass is not mowed, or, or some issues, we issue a citation, and then if it's not rectified within a week, we start issuing daily tickets for that violation. That's all.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mike Neal.
We had a couple of events that happened this past weekend. We had 175 young men and ladies participate in a trials for the Under Armour game in Nike Ladies Gym Rats Basketball. Also, Cruzdine was a success, had a lot of people participating in that. Upcoming events will be October 7th, 2023 Midwest Juco Prep Jamboree will be held at Dean and Barbara Community Center. The colleges that will be participating in this jamboree will be College of the Page, South Suburban, Wobenese, Bosco Institution, Indiana League, and also La Lumre Prep School. The games will start at 10:00 a.m. Also, October 14th and October 28th, Nike Outball Girl Fall League will be at the Dean and Barbara Community Center. October 21st, UA Indiana Game One Day Hoop Shootout will also be held at Dean and Barbara Community Center. On October 6th, Dean and Barbara Community Center will be hosting adult volleyball leagues through December 15th. Also, Special Olympics has participated, partnered with the Parks Department in a Clothes and Shoes Drive. There will be a five-by-five. There will be a five-by-five bin placed outside where softly-worn clothing and shoes can be dedicated. Donations will be picked up weekly. Uh, that's it.
Thank you, Mike. Mm-hmm. Planning and Building Department, Ms. Sheila Shine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to remind our community and everyone that we are moving through our comprehensive plan. We, the consultant last week met with the steering committee, he also met with the community momentum committee. Our next event will be our open house, and it is scheduled for October the fifth from five to seven P.M. at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. So, please, uh, we are looking for the support of the community, because this is your community, and we want to know what you want. So, please come out and support.
Thank you, Sheila. Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, members of the council, Madam Clerk Treasurer, I have submitted to you a written report. Uh, it's available to you to read. The one highlight I would call your attention to is that we had a minutes workshop, which is the first of some in-house workshops I hope to convene where I think that there's a need. All the departments cooperated highly. Uh, the workshop, I thought, went well. I'm expecting that you'll get feedback in each of the departments over time. And we're continuing our practice of convening the staff, the department leadership on the Wednesday following the council meeting. And tomorrow, we're going to talk, I've got on the agenda already some matters that were raised tonight, but also some matters that have been raised by members of the Fire Department to share with our departmental staff. Unless there's a question, Mr. President, of me from any member of the council, I am pleased to be seated.
Question.
Mr. White.
Well, actually, it's a statement. I thank you, Mr. Griffin, for this report. I've been looking for these reports for three and a half years, and this is the first time I've seen one from a town manager. So, I'm really appreciative that I'm starting to see these things. I just want to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
All right.
I already told them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on tonight to general orders, we have, uh, first reading ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-three. It's the ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana appropriation, additional monies within the various fire protection territory funds for the year twenty-twenty-three, which were not included in the current budget.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Minchuck with a second by Mrs. Uszak for approval of ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-three on first reading. Anything to add, Trista?
I don't, because I'm not familiar with this, uh, prior to the agenda.
Oh, okay. This is an additional appropriation, the amount is sixty-eight thousand dollars, going to the Fire Department Health, Life, A.D., and D.
Prior to the, uh, next reading, I'll go ahead and reach out to the chief, so I can explain.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call, please.
This is first, this is first reading.
This is first reading.
Right, okay.
Yes.
All right.
Do you have an agenda?
I do.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Mrs. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway.
Yeah.
Mr. Minchuck.
Yes.
Mrs. Uszak.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on tonight to ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-four, it's the item we added to the agenda for first reading. This is a, uh, will be a public hearing, um, about our taxes for next year, our budget. Trista, I know you have a comment about this one.
I do, I'm well acquainted. As council knows, the budget process is a two-hearing process, as all of your ordinances are. Well, tonight is set for first reading. It has been advertised through the Indiana Gateway System, which is what is required now, and is no longer required to be put in the newspaper itself. Um, Clerk Treasurer White Gibson performed that in a timely fashion, and so we are set today for the first reading, uh, on the budget. The website available for the public, if anyone wants to, uh, go in and review the numbers at this early stage, if you search in your search bar for Indiana Gateway, uh, it will then lead you into the public taxpayer portal, and you can look up budget information. Uh, some highlights, and I'll remind council again, as is our practice here in Maryville, that both the budgets and the levies are advertised a little bit high, so that you all have some room to decide and narrow back down into, uh, where the expenses need to be. There are fifty-five funds advertised for the Town of Maryville in this current budget. There are slightly more than that that the town does use, but those are the ones that are advertised and required. They include things like the general fund, which is the bulk of your, um, budget for operational expenses for the town. Within that general fund, there are nine departments that partake in that money, and it is supported this year by over eight million dollars of tax dollars, as well as just over three million dollars of other miscellaneous revenues. The state has authorized a four percent increase in that levy for this next year, for the year of twenty-twenty-four, and your budget has been advertised, uh, in that fashion. Some other funds of note that receive various kinds of tax dollars are the Motor Vehicle Highway, and then, secondly, the Local Broden Street. Your gas tax dollars go to support those funds, which are then used in turn to pave your roads and streets. Uh, the Parks Department does not receive tax dollars, but they are a separate standing fund, uh, for operational purposes. The Cumulative Capital Development Fund is one that does receive tax dollars as well, and that, uh, can be spent on capital items that the town needs, vehicles, buildings, uh, capital items as opposed to operational things. The Fire Department, through the territory, does receive its own taxes as well to support their operational and their equipment expenses. Just over three million dollars of property taxes is advertised for this coming year to support their needs, who then in turn support and protect all of you. Uh, the Stormwater Fund receives fees, uh, through the, um, bi-annual property tax bills that you pay. Recycling Grant is a fund that we receive from the county, approximately two hundred thousand dollars a year to aid in the town's recycling efforts on behalf of the residents and for the residents. As well, a local option income tax supports public safety needs, and then the Redevelopment Commission, of course, has some funds as well. Uh, in total, the budget Terry advertised, uh, expenses at this point are just over forty-seven million dollars, encompassing some of the funds I mentioned and, uh, many others, as well as, again, fifty-five funds total. In total, the property taxes that have been advertised across the town are just over fourteen million. I expect those will come in a little bit lower, uh, as we work through the budget. This year's total property taxes to support the various funds was just over thirteen-point-nine million. Again, a four percent increase is allowed per state statute this year. So, those are some of the highlights. The second reading, uh, council is set for October tenth. The subsequent council meeting to today, beginning at six-thirty, at that time, the budget will be before you for, um, further discussion and vote, and I do suggest to remind, the public hearing is tonight for this.
This is a bit unusual, as it's a first reading ordinance, but it is a public hearing tonight in reference to the town budget for two thousand twenty-four. Is there any, uh, public comment in regards to our budget? Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
A motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Pettit for approval of the budget, ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-four on first reading. Open to, for discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yeah, I just, I just had a question about ninety-five, fifty-six opioid settlement.
Mm-hmm.
What was the source of the settlement?
Go ahead, Trista.
Mr. White, there are two funds you'll see there, one is restricted and one is unrestricted.
Yes.
That comes from, uh, a state settlement through the state attorney general's office. Every community, county, city, town, uh, in the state has received funds. The amount of the funds have varied, of course, based on population and, and whatever the terms of the settlement were. There are restricted uses available for that. Uh, it kind of follows a similar pattern to the A.R.P. in the sense that a plan has to be established before the money can be spent, uh, and so that still needs to happen. But right now, the town has received the money, and it's waiting there for, for future planning and use. A variety of things have been implemented so far by a variety of communities. Some have hired social workers to assist the police department, some have, um, another common is the, I can never say it right, the lock zone, the, um.
To wake you up?
For an overdose, to reverse the effects of the overdose drug, uh, so that public safety officials have those at their hand and available. Uh, a, a wide, wide variety of things, and as council gets ready to start to plan that, I do have a few-page printout that lists the variety of, of items available for use.
So, is this like a one-time shot here, or do you see us getting that additional more light?
Right, so the biggest lump sum came the, toward the end of last year. Um, you will receive for thirteen or fifteen years additional monies each year, uh, based on the settlement. It's already determined what that amount will be. Uh, we did receive, though, a little bit more this year than was expected, uh, which was a surprise, based on how that settlement structure was set up, but, um, and so it's available then, as it's received annually, to be able to spend annually based on the plan.
Thank you. You answered my questions.
Any other comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mrs. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway.
Yes.
Mr. Minchuck.
Yes.
Mrs. Uszak.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Aye.
And Mr. Bella.
Yes.
And Mr. White, can you please pass down the check, register, so the rest of the council can sign it?
Yes.
Sorry. Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on tonight to resolutions, we have no second reading ordinances. Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-two, resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies within the twenty-twenty-three budget for the, uh, Parks and Non-Reverting Fund. The, uh, decrease is five thousand dollars, the increase is five thousand dollars, and that affected zero.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uszak, for approval of this simple tran- simple transfer. Questions or comments? Hearing none, this is a resolution, a roll call vote is fine. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the American Rescue Plan, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the, uh, A.R.P. voucher for tonight is forty-six thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-five cents. I make a motion that we approve this A.R.P. voucher for forty-six thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Minchuck to approve the, uh, A.P. voucher register summary for the A.R.P. purchases for September twenty-sixth. The amount's forty-six thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-five cents. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to the, uh, any, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals or Large Gathering Actions, Sheila?
No, Mr. President.
Okay. Old business, any old business tonight? New business, any new business tonight? Moving on to public comment, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we allow three minutes. Is there any public comment?
Good evening, council. My name's Scott Franco. I'm with Surf Internet. I'm here this evening from our corporate office at two-two-eight Waterfall Drive in Elkhart, Indiana. We also have an office, uh, in La Porte. I thought I'd come here this evening just for a couple of moments to introduce myself, our company. Um, we have interest to come to Maryville, uh, with our fiber, and we first approached Maryville, I think, in, in July, uh, with just a, just to kind of start touching on those plans, and we're hoping that we can move forward with, uh, some more meetings to explore the feasibility. A little bit about our company, um, like I said, we're, we're headquartered in Elkhart, but we are throughout Indiana, and we're working throughout the region, uh, over here. We, if you've paid attention to the news, perhaps some of you have heard our company as we've recently, um, celebrated, uh, lighting up is what we call that when we go live in a community, but we did that recently in Valparaiso. We also did that in Portage. We're currently in construction in South Haven. We're going to be under construction in Hobart here, uh, the next, uh, couple of months, and we're also in discussions with some neighboring, um, areas. We're talking Sherrville, St. John, um, Crown Point. Um, we, we'd like to, uh, be in Maryville. We, we see opportunity when we do our feasibility. Um, we're not sure what the reality of that is, uh, with your, with you residents, or, um, we'd like to explore that further, um, in, in the right kind of a setting and a meeting, if we could get to the table with, uh, some folks, maybe in public utilities, um, um, you know, uh, planning and kind of work through, uh, the presentation, and we have an agenda that kind of works through some of those details. We're a registered utility, so we bring fiber to communities, and then we're an ISP on the backend of that to offer. Um, so when I say fiber and high-speed is true symmetrical speed, internet with your upload and download speeds up to a gig, and, um, that's, that kind of separates us from a lot of other, um, internet providers, so to say, and, uh, but we like to make sure when we work with the community that we're in alignment with, um, with y'all, and that we're not overwhelming any, any of, uh, the processes, including like with locates. So, we like to be very systematic in how we do our approach, um, so we're not just coming in and messing things up. And I don't know if it's appropriate in, in public comments to ask any questions or have any feedback, um, but, but, um, the two things we'd like to explore further is if, if we're, if we're right about our feasibility, and there really is opportunity, and we could be welcomed here to work with, with Maryville, and then, secondly, what some possible next steps would be to sort of play out that process. Mr. Griffin, maybe we could talk eventually after this and, with your staff, and see where we could go with some next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Franco.
Yeah, thank you.
Chris Holst, eight-hundred West Seventy-Third Avenue. So, I would like to start by thanking the whole town council, uh, for those who aren't familiar with us, Turkey Creek folks, um, we've been working with the, the town, uh, and our, um, our little island at the corner of Seventy-Third and Van Buren. Um, in the last six weeks, we've gone from an at-risk project to a project that's very, uh, that's really flourished. Um, our, our island has been repaired. Within the last two weeks, we've had our bushes put in, our curb has been painted, uh, we've had mulch put in, um, we actually cleaned the curb so that Jeff and his gang could put, uh, uh, get it, get it painted for us, and, uh, I'd like to say a special note, I know Steve isn't here today, but, uh, Steve's been, been very patient and very diligent and very professional with us, so I'd really like to thank him personally. I wish you were here to, uh, tonight for that. But, uh, with all that being said, our, our, our little project, I just want to mention, it's still incomplete. Um, we, we're still a short, a linear sign, and, um, our first choice would be to have the Great Sock Trail sign back, but I know, uh, Steve was working on a, a replicate with landmark signs, so I'm excited to touch base with him and see where we're at with that. Um, in regard to the Great Sock Trail sign, um, it's important to us, and recently, someone asked one of our folks, why do you residents care where the sign is at? Well, for one, um, Miss E has talked about how it was influential on her moving to the neighborhood. I've talked about Frank, how he's been in the neighborhood since nineteen sixty-seven, and how he, um, would see it going, put back and forth to work every day. And Sunday night, when we were watering, I ran into a, a young man named Ari. He went to school at Ittings. This story really touched me, so please bear with me. But he went on to ask me, as I was watering, about the sign, and I explained to him that it's been down for five years. to him that it's been down for five years. He said he, he went to school at Eddings, he left and worked in Egypt for five years and came back, and that, that sign, every day when he drove by it, and, uh, on, on the school bus, that gave him a sense of pride. For fifty years, it's given people a sense of pride. That's why it's important, folks. Obviously, it'd be our first choice, but, uh, once again, uh, I'm excited about working with Steve on, uh, what landmark, uh, signs could come up to replicate that sign. Um, and once again, thank you for all of your support.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Claudia Wells. I'm a resident of Maryville, and I'm also a participant, and I utilize the Dean and Barbara White Center, and me, along with some of the other people in the audience, we go to yoga. Yoga has been very beneficial, not just for me personally, but for a lot of people, and noticing, getting an email stating that the class would be discontinued. And, Mr. Pettit, you had mentioned in your speech that there will be a, an, a meeting?
Yes.
On Thursday at 4:30?
Yes.
And is it gonna be open to the public?
Yes, it is. All committee meetings are open to the public, ma'am.
Okay, so then we can come in and hear and talk about it.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you so much. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too.
Moving on tonight to announcements. The Board of Zoning Appeals meeting will be
September 27th at 6:30. The next town council meeting is on October 10th at 6:30, and the trunk or treat is October 26th, as Mrs. Neal mentioned, from 5:30 to 7:30.
What's your decision?
Second.
You mean on the Saturday?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
She said she thinks there's going to be. You might want to check with her because I told, I emailed Linda and told Rick I wouldn't be able to make the workshop.